This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:32 PM Tuesday, August 20, 2019, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Aben?
Here.
Mr. Schusner?
Here.
Ms. Selena?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's stand as we're able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for
2.01, Approval of Agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'd like to note that the consent agenda has been amended and Item 7.02, Closed Session for Negotiations, has been added to the agenda.
With approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements and communications. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Julie Brock, Executive Director for the Cradle to Career Initiative, to give us an update.
Well, happy back to school. This is super exciting. This is like my favorite time of year, and I get a small school supplies everywhere. So, this is great. Cradle to Career, we're excited. We have been continuing to meet periodically through the summer, and so I just have a few updates for you. There is a handout that I think is in your board packet. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you about a lot tonight is about results-based accountability, RBA for short, and how this is the data framework that we're using within our networks to start to align our programmatic data. So, there's a picture for you there, an image of where we are in the conversation. So, there's two results that we are concerned with, with Cradle to Career. One is at the population results level. That is the one that's owned by the community, in which all of our programs would be a contributing factor of. And then, the performance measure. And the performance measure would be then how each program within individual organizations are then aligning their programmatic data toward the population result. So, you notice that in your little figure there, I have a little box that says "We're here." So, over the summer, our two networks that are open, kindergarten readiness and high school graduation, they have solidified their results, their population result, and they also are working through their indicators right now. Once they have -- and high school graduation is still figuring out how to measure prepared for their next step, and we're thinking that that's going to be a scale and conglomerate of quite a few different measures. And once they have those indicators decided, then we will do an activity called Turn the Curve. And when we turn the curve, that's when we will come up with our collective strategies for the network, and then we'll shift over to the organization. So, just letting you know that we are making progress. We're very excited about where we are. And there's some updates then on the second page for you, specifically where kindergarten readiness is. They've actually already turned the curve on their indicators. They have three subgroups working. One was on community landscape. This group is looking at what has already been done in early childhood, leading up to kindergarten. The second group is identifying where the 56% of children cared for outside of public or private preschool are during the day. So, we're looking at piloting a survey through community schools that would just ask incoming parent -- or incoming kindergarteners, their parents, where was your child before coming to school? And so, we're hopeful that we'll start to be able to take away and kind of start to figure out where our kids are coming from, in that 56%. And then, the third is that we're learning from Dakota County. Dakota County does this really great thing where they assign a Mars number at birth. And that way, the data or anything within those systems track with the student. So, we're trying to learn from them to see what are the pros, what are the cons, what have they learned from doing this practice. And then, high school graduation, you can see the conversation there. When we start to think about that indicator, prepared for their next step, some of the things that we're exploring is prepared for their next step, how that is defined. They've been defined as students understand their options and are making informed choices for their next steps. And when we think about steps, we're thinking, are you going straight into the workforce? Are you going on to get a certification? Are you going into a college program? And then, we're looking at measuring that in a quantitative and a qualitative way. So, do you have an informed mentor in your life? Do you feel ready for your next step? And then, the other, just other, save the dates on the bottom of that are twofold. We have our Fall convening coming up on Tuesday, October 1st. This is a workshop for our community partners, so that they can learn in three different tracks, data, collective impact, and equity. And then, also, we have an event coming up on October 15th, in which the former Minnesota Fed Director Art Rolnick will come and talk to our business community about the importance of investing in early childhood education. Do you have any questions for me?
Oh, Julie, first of all, thank you. And results-based accountability, professional development, could you speak briefly to that? I think that's something that's very important, and members of the board may very well be interested in seeing if there's space available for their participation.
Yes, so we do have, we're excited to be partnering with the district and offering results-based accountability on the Professional Development Day, August 28th. We have two workshops going, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, in which we will first go through basic RBA 101, what is this, how do we turn the curve? And then, the second part is actually, we've asked educators or anyone within the education system to bring their own measures or what they want to work on, and we will help them turn the curve and come up with an action plan to utilize throughout the school day or the school year. In addition to that, we are starting to put together our service plan for the community in which we will work with organizations or classroom, however, you know, that works, in order to then offer RBA training for groups of community members who want to be more versed in this.
Thank you, Director Workman.
Location?
Oh, oh, location is Mayo, Mayo High School in room 239 and 239A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
3.02, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Board members. I'll briefly comment on a recent article that was forwarded to me. It was a, from the American Pediatric Association Journal, and just a interesting article that dealt with those working the field, if you will, recognizing the importance of acknowledging bias and how it may relate to services provided, and how that potentially also relates to other disciplines, to include education. And it was just a good read, and I may very well forward it to other board members if you so indicate an interest. Moving ahead, Consent Agenda, Action Item. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration?
I do. Item 4.03, Approval of Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code provisions.
Any other items?
With approval of the consent agenda with that item removed.
Discussion. And... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
4.03.
4.03.
So, I wanted to have a discussion before voting on this item, because I was a little uncomfortable with the change in protocol, or at least practice, from past practice with rights, rules, regulations, and the Student Behavior Handbook. So, as I read this agenda item, we are approving a portion of what's in the Student Behavior Handbook, because the rights, rules, and regulations used to be the separate yellow book, if you remember, and now are all included in one item. But Policy 305 indicates that we, that student handbooks are subject to annual review and approval by the school board. So, last year, the school board had the whole student handbook presented to them, and we had a discussion of it. And in my review of this agenda item, in addition to the not having the rest of the student handbook to review, the policy committee is going to need to take a look at a few policies, because I think we have some inconsistencies in some of our procedures that might lead to some of this confusion. For example, I'm hoping somebody can tell me why we are still approving the rights, rules, and regulations separately from the student handbook. As I understand, it's not in state statute, it's our own policy, and it's because we used to have a rights, rules, and regulations book that was replaced by the student handbook. So, what we might want to think about doing as a policy committee is revising that policy to reflect what the documentation is that we're currently using, which is a student handbook, including the rights, rules, and regulations. So, I have two thoughts on how we can handle this agenda item tonight. We can either approve the agenda item as is, to just reflect the changes in the policies, because that's what I think this agenda item was getting at originally, and then ask the superintendent to bring the full student handbook for our review and approval at a later meeting, which would also address my second concern, because there are some policies that were in the, the list of policies that were in the 2018-19 student handbook, which this resolution says the section, the Rights, Rules, Regulations, and Procedural Code section for 2019-20 school year has not been changed. But there were some policies that are in Policy 506 that were not in the 2018-90 handbook that I think need to be in there. So, it's, that's more of an edit. Please. I hope that was clear.
Yes, I'll read the policy, just so we're all on the same page here. General Statement of Policy, Section A, shall be your responsibility to the superintendent to implement the school board policy and to recommend additions and modifications thereto. Administration is authorized to develop guidelines and directives to effect, implement of the school board policies. These guidelines and directives shall not be inconsistent with said policies. At least annually, these written procedures shall be presented to the school board for review. The Rights, Rules, and Regulations Procedure Code shall be subject to annual review and approval by the school board. The school board principal and other administrators who have handbook responsibilities shall present recommended changes necessary to reflect new and modified policies. Changes of substance within the handbook shall be reviewed by the superintendent and Director of Teaching and Learning to assure compliance with the school board policy. So, our understanding of this policy is that the rights, rules, and regs is to be approved by the board annually. Last year was the first year that we did include it into the handbook, just to try to save the district some money. It didn't make a lot of sense to me to print multiple copies of that. There weren't no changes, specific changes, to the actual rights, rules, and regs, except for there were the policies listed that were updated and approved by the school board at an earlier time. So, this is why it was presented that way as an agenda item.
And I have to apologize, Mike. I listed the wrong policy. That was Policy 305, but I was actually looking at 208, which is the Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies, and it's in section...
Director Nathan, if I may. Superintendent Munoz, you're referencing what policy that you just read from?
305.
305, okay. I just want to keep...
Which reflects that the board needs to approve the rights, rules, and regs annually.
And Director Nathan, you're quoting now from policies...
Policy 208, that says, "These guidelines and directives, including employee and student handbooks, shall be subject to annual review and approval by the school board." So, that's part of the consistency/inconsistency that I was speaking of in terms of our policies. But right now, we have one policy that says we approve the rights, rules, and regulations, which are a portion of the student handbook, and another policy that says that we review and approve the student handbook. And that's why I pulled this out. 208.
Oh, 208.
208, yeah.
Director Workman.
I think it would be helpful, too, for the board to know that our protocol on this has been that we actually do approve the whole thing. That's what we did on January 17, July 17, 2018, where it was brought as a briefing item. We reviewed it, and then we voted to approve it. I don't remember if it was at a meeting or at a future meeting, but that was, that was the protocol, so...
Any additional comments?
I guess I would, I would, I agree, the policy needs to be looked at by the policy committee, but I think the board needs to ask themselves, what is their role? You have a policy, and it's the management's responsibility to implement that policy. I don't think the board should get directly involved in how we handle discipline, long as we're in compliance with the policy set forth by, by the school board.
And if I may, if I may, I don't want to speak for you, Director Nathan, but you were simply referencing the language differences, and perhaps it would be nice to reconcile them? Or were you speaking to wanting to provide input regarding the discipline, how it's carried out, as the superintendent perhaps has deluded to?
Well, I think the board's role in approving the policies that are incorporated into the student handbook are clear. But I think if we're going to share the expectations with our students and our staff and our families about behavior and their rights, in the event that they have violations of behavior, then we should raise up this document to public discussion and presentation, because it really does help to set the tone and the quality of the environment in the schools. The conversations that I've watched in the past, that the board has had on the, on the student handbook, have been very positive. It's been an opportunity to reflect on what our priorities are for safe and welcoming schools. Some of the language changes that the Office of Civil Rights recommended to us that really improved how we handled our, our description of behaviors and what the consequences were. So, I'm just questioning why we would change from that procedure when, A, it's in policy, and B, it has been a way for us to get the message out for this fundamental document that really helps to, to set a positive environment in our schools. I think, once again, everybody likes to talk for you, Kathy, so it's my turn. I know you said you didn't want to talk for Kathy. I guess, I'm not particularly looking to say, we're going to go through all of these discipline measures, and we're going to change everything that you do. That's not the intent at all, because those decisions are made at the administrative level, Mike, with you and your team. I think the issue is that it needs to be reviewed and approved, whether or not school board members might take issue with any particular item, of course, would remain to be seen. I wouldn't anticipate that at this point, from what we've seen of the student handbook. So far, my interest, as some of you know, has always been in process and policy and protocol and following the policies that the board has approved and set.
If there are no additional comments, we will take a vote on 403, to include it back as a part of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Make it clear.
You're looking for, you're looking for a motion...
Right.
To approve, to approve Item 403. Yes, so moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approving.
Back at, this is an action item, Consent Agenda, through a motion to approve the entire...
We already approved the consent.
Okay, just one, okay.
Yep. I agree.
5.01, Introduction of New Administrators. This is informational item. Superintendent Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Carl Bach, an Executive Director of HR, introduce our new administrators.
Still afternoon, so good afternoon. I am very pleased to announce or introduce our administration this year, and what we decided to do is just introduce, because we had a lot of movement, we just decided to introduce administrators new to the district or new to, new leads to a building. So, I'm just going to have them stand up and come up here and give a 30-minute speech each. No, I'm just kidding. I just, I just, for the, for the sake of just making this a little bit more efficient, I'll just ask you to stand up and wait when I introduce you. So, first, in alphabetical order, we have Amy Adams, who is the new principal at Longfellow. Amy was previously an assistant principal at Churchill Hoover. Chris Davidson, who's not able to join us tonight, is the new principal at Gage, and he was previously the principal at Longfellow. Brent Gates, new principal at John Adams, previously the principal at Elton Hills. Martine Haglund, the new associate principal at John Adams, previously an equity specialist in the district. Andrew Capel, the new principal at Willow Creek, previously, previously the associate principal at Fidel. Andrew Newman, principal at Elton, previously the principal at Willow Creek. David Resney, the new principal at Franklin and Montessori at Franklin. David was previously an assistant principal at Ellis Middle School in Austin. And finally, Steve Willman, the new associate principal at Sunset Terrace, and we should say we're welcoming, welcoming back Steve Willman, and he was previously the high school principal at Byron. Our new administrators.
Informational item. As the superintendent and staff are coming forward, this will be, as it's being presented, each presenter will allow an opportunity for questions to be provided at the end of their presentation. So, if you wouldn't mind maybe making notations of your questions as they are presenting, then we can ask them at that point in time. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we are going to, here's our agenda for tonight. The first four presenters are going to give you a little bit of background information. We think that would be important for you to help understand some of the actions that we're doing in the actual strategic plan. So, as Chair Barlow said, after each section, we'll take questions for that section. And then, after that, I'm going to get into the strategic plan. So, I think our first person is Brenda.
If you recall, we were one of 16 districts in the nation that were invited to be part of that information and transformational leadership network. And that honor brought us to lots of trainings and opportunities with Bill Daggett, and including the Model Schools Conference in DC in June. So, we have, our eyes have been opened to the rigor and relevance framework, and why we're excited about that is because that aligns perfectly to the graduate profile. So, if we, if you look at that rigor and relevance framework there, the Y-axis is the thinking continuum. And those of you who have been around schools for a while may have heard about Bloom's taxonomy, and that's, people call that different things. There's Web's, DOK, Degrees of Knowledge, too, but with Daggett's work, it's the thinking continuum, and then the X-axis is the action continuum. So, in Quad A, you know, and we certainly have to have some Quad A, kids need to know basic knowledge. That Quad C is more basic knowledge, but of more complex systems. In Quad B, students are applying some of the things they know, but Quad D is really where the action is. And when you look at what's in Quad D, that is 100% our graduate profile. So, this work aligns perfectly, or this rigor and relevance framework really aligns perfectly to what we're looking for. So, that just says a little bit more about what could be in the, the different quadrants. And, you know, we, we know that we're not going to be Quad D all day, every day, but our students today are going to be asked to do Quad D-type of work. They're going to be asked to solve problems that are complex, and there isn't just one known answer. If, you know, Bill Daggett, he's fascinating to listen to. I invite you to come next Wednesday at 8 o'clock or 12:30. Just find us in that JM auditorium, you can be a part of that. But he talks about artificial intelligence and how, you know, we all have the world at our fingertips, at our, with our smartphones, and our kids do, too. So, you know, we're not going to say we're, we don't care about discrete knowledge anymore. Of course, we do. There's that foundation of facts, but it's more the application. And, you know, this isn't totally new. We've kind of been thinking about that for a while. So, what we're going to do is this year, with our agreement with the International Center for Leadership in Education, we are focusing this training on all of our admins, so all of our principals, assistants, associates, department leaders, and our instructional coaches, and our special ed coaches, to develop our capacity for developing that foundation of leadership, for rigorous learning. We're doing that course, and also another course, Foundations of Instructional Excellence. So, what that looks like is the, his consultants will be here. We're split into lots of different groups, so it's some good differentiated learning, or there's not 120 of us in a room trying to take it all in. But we'll have two full days of training, one in September, one in January. But it's more exciting than that is each of the cohorts of 15 people will have eight additional half-days where they'll actually meet in buildings, and will spend some time with the consultant, with the trainer, talking about this rigor and relevance framework. But we'll actually be going into classrooms to see where it's going on, and, and then talk about, you know, if it isn't happening, what could we do to coach our teachers? So, it's kind of a, you know, this year, we're laying the leadership foundation, and it's our plan at this time to expand that more to our teachers next year. So, we could talk forever about the rigor and relevance framework, but we won't. Do you have any questions about that?
All right, next up, SEL. And Superintendent, if I may, our viewing public may not know the positions that these individuals serve in, and just as a way of informing them, if you would mind.
You can do that. My name is Denise Moody, Moody, sorry. My name is Denise Moody, and I serve as the Assistant Director of Student Services, and it is my privilege to be leading the work that we're doing around social-emotional learning for this upcoming year. So, I'm here to share a little bit with you briefly around SEL. I know that we're planning on some further presentations, but just to give you kind of a snapshot of the work that we are embarking on for this school year. So, as we have considered what needs to happen for our students to leave RPS and meet all of those areas on our graduate profile, there was a definite need for us to be able to focus on some non-academic areas. So, that is really where SEL came in. It allows us to be able to build the skills of our students for some of those areas that are uniquely human, about how do they be able to do relationships and self-manage their own emotions. And so, we are, this emphasis on social-emotional learning is going to teach our students that, the skills that they need to be successful in life, and reach their goals of being resilient learners and effective collaborators. So, on the slide, this is the definition that we're using for SEL. So, SEL is the process through which students and adults develop the skills for fundamental life effectiveness. These are the skills that we all need to handle ourselves, our relationships, and our work effectively and ethically. So, I want to talk about three kind of big ideas about SEL. So, first of all, the SEL skills can be taught. So, sometimes, we ascribe innate characteristics to students that might struggle in different areas, and we really want to shift that thinking to think about those being skill deficits. How do we teach skills that kids don't have, that they need in order to be effective in life? The other area, the other big idea is around that cultivating SEL skills is the role of all adults. In the past, we may have thought about that. That's the role of the counselor, that's the role of the social worker, and we're really trying to change that thinking that we all... The third big idea is that SEL makes schools a better place to be. Next slide. There was a meta-analysis by Durlock in 2011 that looked at 213 studies and compared schools that had done universal SEL compared to schools that had not. And this was kind of a summary of all of that research. And you'll see that it had improvements both in pro-social behavior, their attitudes about themselves and their teachers, and a reduction in problem behaviors. It also, when they were, students were asked about their own perception of themselves, they saw a 10% reduction in emotional distress and a 23% self-perception of their own skills. And then maybe the most surprising one is the 11% increase in scores on standardized test scores. So there is a lot of data that supports the work that we're doing, and I'm really excited about our steps forward. So this is a graphic about the model that we're using for social-emotional learning, and it's built on a multi-tiered system of support framework. And you'll see it, Tier One is the school environment. This is really what do we do for all kids so that they feel valued and connected and are learning the skills they need to be effective? We realize that some students are going to need more support, and so how do we get students that need additional support, that targeted support that they need to be effective? And then at Tier Three, it's really coordinating that level of care. We also realize that some of our students are going to need a level of care that is beyond what we as a school district will be able to provide. So how do we coordinate with our community providers, whether they're medical providers or clinical providers, in order for students to be successful both at school and in their homes and community? So two things I want to talk about. First of all is Panorama. So Panorama is an online survey platform that we are going to be using to gather information from students, families, and staff about the student's own perception of their social competency, and then their perception of the school environment and their relationships within the school. So we did our first survey administration using the Panorama tool in May of 2019. We surveyed students at all 26 sites and surveyed almost 10,000 3rd through 12th graders. So we were able to use that data. The data is helpful in two ways, I think. First of all, it provides us a measurement tool in order to be able to look at, are we being effective in our work around SEL? Are our students learning the things that we are setting out to learn? And it's also a really helpful tool in that it allows us to hear both the voices of our students, families, and staff. What is their perception, and how can we use that to impact change within our buildings? So our data, our leaders have already been using this data as part of their leadership teams at the Data Retreat. So it was really fun to be walking in the halls and hear all of the different leadership teams talking about the different data points in the Panorama survey, and we had a lot of really great feedback in that setting. The building principals will also be sharing the data with their school staff next week during back-to-school. So as I mentioned, we're going to be sharing some more in-depth data in October when we present some data, both academic and our social-emotional data. But I wanted to give you just a couple high-level takeaways from that data. So the first thing that was really cool is that students had really positive feelings about their teachers. So when asked, "How many of your teachers are respectful of you?", 85% of the students said that their teacher was quite or extremely respectful. And then when we asked our 3rd through 5th graders, "How excited would you be to have your teacher again?", 87% of our students said that they would be excited to have their teacher again. So I thought that was really cool. They also report high levels of caring about each other. When we asked, they reported high levels of being, caring about the feelings of others, listening to other students' point of view, and getting along well with others that had different opinions than themselves. The survey results also identified some areas that we definitely need to work on. Only, one big takeaway was that students don't feel connected to their school or to each other. When asked, when we asked our secondary students, only 20% of our secondary students felt quite a bit or extremely connected to their school, and only 37% felt that they mattered quite a bit or a tremendous amount to others at school. And while at elementary, we did better, I think part of elementary is, there's more of that sense, we still had pockets of students that reported that they didn't feel like they belonged, including 249 students at the elementary feeling that they, reported that they did not belong at all to their school. The last takeaway I want to share with you is that students rated themselves low on their own ability to regulate their emotions. So there were a couple of questions I just want to pull out. That one was, can you control your emotions when you need to? And we have 463 students, 3rd through 12th grade, that said that they could do it almost never. So even when they needed to control their emotions, they weren't able to. And when asked about whether they were able to stay calm when things go bad, we had 590 students reported that they weren't able to stay calm at all. So it was really helpful information as we embark on kind of this work to be able to have that data, and I'm really excited to see how those results change over time. We will be repeating the survey this fall, and we'll also be adding a staff survey in. We are excited to hear from staff about their experiences and also gather some information on how we can support their social-emotional well-being as well. We are piloting a couple of different initiatives that will support staff wellness here this fall to just get an idea of what might be helpful to our staff, and want to be able to expand that as we move forward. So the other logo that's up there is for Second Step. So Second Step is the curriculum that we have adopted district-wide for pre-K through 8th grade for social-emotional learning. We have had pockets in our school that have been doing Second Step for a very long time, so with really positive feedback. So we're really excited about being able to adopt that district-wide. We are working towards a vision of teacher-led SEL. As you look at the research around SEL, it really is the most impactful when we find that it's integrated throughout the school day. So we are going to be working with our teaching staff to have them feel more comfortable about how do we have this be part of all of our conversations? That it's not just this 20-minute pull-out that I get once a week, but how do we make this part of solving problems in the classroom and part of our morning meetings? And so we're really excited about working towards that goal. You will notice that I said pre-K through 8th, for Second Step. There is not a high school version of Second Step, and we want to be very thoughtful about what we're doing with our high school students. So over the course of this year, we are going to be meeting with different groups of students and really gathering some feedback on what they think that they need for these skills. Nationally, there really isn't a lot out there when it comes to how do we do SEL with high schoolers, and so we want to really gather the voice of our students as we make that decision. Next slide. Okay. So one more thing I want to talk to you about is the Rochester Pediatric Mental Health Task Force. So this is a partnership with Olmsted County Public Health, Mayo Clinic, and a variety of other community providers that have come together to really want to respond to the growing mental health needs of the, of our community, and specifically our children. And so while schools are kind of a logical place to do early identification and intervention, we also realize that there are needs that go beyond what we're able to provide too. So I'm really excited about this kind of community response to being able to meet students' needs. So we are going to be piloting at four sites this fall, the use of a screening tool. So in the same way we screen for hearing, and vision, and dental, and math, and reading, we're looking at how do we also screen for social-emotional concerns so that we are able to earlier identify and intervene with students that have concerns in this area? So it also allows us to build some really strong partnerships with our community providers and be able to reduce some of the barriers that our families and students experience when trying to access care in the community. So to be very honest, we're still figuring this out, and what this looks like, and having those conversations, and this will be a process over probably a couple of years, but I think we're headed in the right direction to be able to kind of tackle it together and see how we can better meet the needs of our students. That was a lot of talking. Okay.
Let's begin with Director Marvin Schlesner-Warkman.
Thank you. Denise, two quick questions, just for information. For the Panorama survey, I'm assuming you collect information about students' grade level and their school. Do you collect any other demographic information at all?
Yes, we do. Grade level, gender, special ed status, gifted and talented status. So we're able to match that on the back end from the demographic information that we upload into the platform. So we're able to really dig down. It actually is, we're able to look at it even by classroom. So at the elementary, at the elementary level, we can even look at that individual teacher's class and kind of how their teacher responded about them too. So that's kind of, it's interesting to kind of look at it from that way. We haven't explored that much yet, but yes, we have a lot of capability within the platform.
Do you get racial or ethnic?
Ethnicity as well.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And the other quick question. Who teaches the Second Step curriculum?
Yeah. As I said, we have a vision towards teacher-led SEL. So we will really be working with, the counselor is really going to be leading that work. So we added elementary counselors. So we're really excited about having them in the classrooms, partnering with those teachers, and working towards a level where teachers are going to feel more comfortable having those conversations. But we realize that is going to take some time. So it's going to be a combination right now. We have some teachers, for example, at Harriet Bishop, we had some teachers last year who were super excited about teaching SEL and said, "I want to do this." And so we were able to provide them the curriculum and then pilot that. Other schools are definitely on a counselor-led model, so it's going to look different at different sites.
Thank you.
Director Schlesner.
Hey. I think you've actually already answered this based on Dr. Marvin's question, but when I listened to this, I think this is cool stuff, and as some of you know, I get kind of excited about data. So I was wondering if there is, has the district looking at correlations in between the survey data and say our discipline data, and the students who don't feel connected to their schools, and again, the discipline data? You know, like Bren had mentioned, when you start talking artificial intelligence, it's correlating all of the data points. It's possible to find the trends in the data set. So are we moving in that direction?
I think there's always a balance with the confidentiality of the student as well, and so there are kind of different levels of confidentiality around the different survey questions. So that information would have, we would have to do that on the back end. We're not there yet. I think there's the possibility, but we would also always have to balance that with the confidentiality of the student.
Absolutely right. You just have anonymous identifiers across the student population, and you can collect all the data points and look for your trends anonymously from the student.
Sounds really fun, doesn't it? Yeah.
It does.
And we have a lot of systems that gather data, but they don't talk to each other. So we could do that by hand, and we do in some instances, but on a wide scale, no. That's something we wish we had more of.
And I knew the systems didn't talk to each other so well, but that doesn't mean that we can't work towards that.
Yeah, I will say, even some of the sites at the two days of their Data Retreat, they were looking, breaking it down to ethnicity for behavior, and oh, wait a minute, we see how they responded to this one question. So I think that's happening this, that way, but we don't have a system that can just pop that and do it for us. But it is something that I know, I noticed some of the sites doing, and then it's something that our district equity team can do, but it's, right now, it's all going to be manually.
Director Walkman.
I have two questions. One, sort of piggybacking on what Mr. Schlesner just said, is the data that you get now, is it anonymized? Because you were talking about specific teachers and then students within the classroom. I mean, is...
So there's two types of data within the platform. So there is data that is completely, it's anonymized, it's reported in aggregate, and that's when students are reflecting on the school and their environment. When students are reflecting upon themselves, there's another, there's two subscales that we asked them, when they're reflecting on their own perception of their own social competencies, that information is available, and we are able to see how students respond to that data. And that is done that way because there is some power in being able to use that data for our student services providers in order to respond appropriately.
And then my second question was, I think you had mentioned, I don't know if I wrote this down correctly, that there were 590, this is going back to the Panorama survey. There were 590 students who said they could not control their emotions. Did I get that right?
That was when, control their, or stay calm when things go bad.
Right.
592 students, yes.
And so I guess my question was, how many students were actually, actually completed the survey? I'm trying to get a handle on what percentage of our student body was 590.
9,688.
How many?
9,688.
Director Seelinger.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. I have more of a comment, less than a question, because we know that this is the buzzword SEL, and we've heard it for a while. And for my, for my colleagues on the board, and this is an older article that I've saved, Director Walkman and I were talking about how we save old articles. We save the whole magazine or just the article. But I've had this floating around for a while, and I thought it was really interesting. It's an article about social and emotional learning, what's next. NSBA, which is our National School Board Association, Center for Public Education, report on studies of characteristics of effective school boards, strongly echo studies of SEL among students. That is, effective school board members are highly skilled in social and emotional competencies such as defining and working towards clear goals, working collaboratively, communicating effectively, and thinking from multiple perspectives. Given that school boards, together with teachers, families, and administrators, can serve as excellent models themselves for developing and applying SEL skills. And so I have, I've kind of held on to that because I feel like just exactly what you're speaking to, it's all the adults in the building, it's not just responsibility of a counselor or a pull-out or a one-time. And so I challenge my colleagues to buff up on our SEL skills as well, whether we are here or out and about. But I think that, that working together piece is really important for all of this work to go forward.
Do you have a link for that, or a date or something?
Well, I've got a copy. I can make a Xerox for you.
And that's one of the things I really like in the definition that we're using, that it's a process, right? We're always kind of growing and are developing these skills even, and the focus on adults. This is not just something that kids need to learn. We are all kind of growing in this area, so I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Director Marvin.
I just have one other quick question. Is administrative function part of that whole SEL thing? I mean, the ability to, to make decisions and prioritize, and is that part of it?
Yeah, there's a whole unit within the Second Step curriculum that focuses on skills for learning, that focuses on some of that, and the executive functioning skills. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding a school environment. Panorama established that a certain percentage of students do not feel, my words, welcomed or accepted, connected, or that they belong. And so with that information, can you perhaps walk me through or offer to me a way at a individual school, how the teacher, the principal, might be able to better assist, help improve that in the school environment, that individual school, that individual student's school experience?
Well, one evidence-based Tier One practice that we have talked a little bit about is positive greeting at the door. And so one of our sites, Fidel Middle School, has a great practice of greeting students and saying goodbye to students, and when we look at their data, they did really well in this category. So that is one simple, free Tier One practice that can have a huge impact. It doesn't always have to be something really complicated. And so that was one thing that we talked to our secondary sites about, was considering adopting that as a Tier One policy or a practice.
Yeah, I'd even say, I mean, that's one quick, we can start doing that tomorrow kind of thing, but the thing that popped in my head is if I'm a high school and I'm looking at my students that recorded that, I'm going to look, are they involved in any after-school activity, any athletic team? Do they have some other connection to the school besides going to class? If they don't, I may look at what can we do to try to engage those kids? I went to a conference earlier this, last year, and it was specifically on EL students and migrant students, and they said that students that are connected to the school, they do better academically and behavior-wise, and they talked about even looking at if they're involved in an after-school program, or are they involved in a club, or a team that connects, that gives them that connection to the school, and in turn, they do better academically because they have that connection. So I think there's a variety of ways, very simple, easy, you can start doing tomorrow ways, or you can dig deeper and identify that specific group that responded that way, and start looking at how can you get them connected.
Sure. And Director Schlesner-Warkman.
Mike just answered my question.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to respond to that and say that we actually have curricular classes that do quite exactly that, and I will reference our performing music groups. When I taught high school orchestra, I would have probably 80% of those students for four years. And I will reference our performing music groups. When I taught high school orchestra, I would have probably 80% of those students for four years. They got to know me pretty well, which was kind of scary, but I also got to know them. So that when a student walked in the door, it was like, okay, there's something here that's bothering this kid. So, you know, just beef up our, our music classes and expand that. And I think we will be able to address a lot of these problems.
And Director Nathan.
So a lot of this work that's being done at the sites, looking at their own data, Mike, can you share how one building might learn from another building about practices that might be effective?
Well, that, as Denise mentioned, they are going through training to get administrators on how to use that data. But we do provide during our monthly administrative meetings, we do provide opportunities for them to, getting groups to learn. And they select the topics that they want to dialogue about. So we do try to give them opportunities. And I do know like our middle school principals get together on their own. I don't know if it's monthly, but it is monthly. High school principals do the same. So we do try to provide options so that they learn from each other.
And then finally, Denise, you also referenced tier one, two, three. And thank you Superintendent Munoz for responding to Director Nathan's questions regarding those percentages or how that may play itself out. But I am curious, some students may not, of no fault of their own, may not feel a sense of belonging or a sense of connection just based on perhaps not seeing anyone that is familiar or a curriculum that may not be reflective of. So will SEL delve into that any at all? Or is that part of the rigor and relevance framework? Or is it something beyond that maybe Julie's going to speak on or?
Well, I think that's something that in the equity work we're doing, and part of that is looking at our curriculum and making sure, I do know in the last couple of years as they, every year we have a, I think it was health this past summer and a year ago we had math, we're always looking at the materials. Is it a better reflection of our student population, maybe textbooks that we used 20 years ago, 10 years ago? So it's done that way, but I think even just in some of the equity work that we're doing, we'll capture some of that as well. Thank you. Before we go on to the next section, I will just quickly highlight, this is, this was actually something that we were asked to, I shouldn't say we, Denise was asked and Chris from Mayo Clinic was asked to present at the Model Schools Conference. And I will have to admit, I had a pretty proud moment when Dr. Daggett gave his keynote for the conference, which there were over 5,000 people across the U.S. and I think there were some other countries represented there as well. He highlighted the district in his presentation and said that our district is the one, only district he knows of that is using this type of data right with our achievement data, our discipline data, as we look to try to meet the needs of our students. So I did happen to catch it on video with my phone, so I have proof of that. But I mean, I was told that he also referenced in a couple of other sessions that he gave too. But it was kind of nice to know that we're actually out in front of many people with this work. And even though Denise mentioned we're just beginning, but I think it's, it's a good piece of data that's really going to help us as we move forward. So, all right, I'll turn it over to Amy.
Just one quick thing. So, so is your, is your, your video that you took, is that of such quality that we could put it on social media and let the community know how awesome we are?
Yeah, had it been good quality, I would have posted it, but you know, it was kind of like, oh, wait a minute, he's talking about it. So it's not real good. Superintendent. All right, Amy.
All right. Well, this section ties very closely to what Ms. Brock was talking about a few moments ago, about results-based accountability. And you will see some references to that in the plan, and we thought we should give you at least a little taste of what that means. And Director Nathan had asked whether some training would be available on that, and absolutely. So we can follow up on that. The first slide in this section just talks about why this is relevant to us today. And I think you need to look nationally at some of the trends that are going on as well as locally. So from a national standpoint, as you know, we're moving out of an industrial and manufacturing age into information and artificial intelligence age. And so some of the measures of what was high-quality work that were based in the manufacturing world don't make sense anymore. And so you see a trend away from that and why there's maybe a window for some of these new processes to come in. You're certainly familiar with the call for accountability in the school and other service sectors. And then just to justify our funding, we're asked to show, you know, that the money is spent in a way that can show outcomes. The other piece, the local piece, our community schools are actively using this process with their partners to determine how they will approach issues that they're facing and how they'll work together. So that is happening today, right now, in our district. As Julie said, the Cradle to Career Coalition is focused on using RBA. And I would tell you that MDE is beginning to put it into their grant applications, one of which I just wrote. So they're beginning to use RBA as an evaluation tool for funded efforts. So I'm seeing lots of signs that we're on the right track here. This is going to become sort of common language, and I'm happy to, to say that we have a lot of resources already in the area. So just a quick definition from the author of Trying Hard is Not Good Enough. That is the, kind of the starting book on RBA. If you're interested in picking it up, it's a quick read, but it gives you a lot of examples on how the RBA process can relate to your everyday life so that it's relevant as you're learning about it. So there's two main parts to this definition. It's talking about RBA being a disciplined way of thinking and acting. So it's controlling sort of how we approach problems. And then two purposes, to improve the quality of life in communities, what Julie referred to Julie Brock as population results. So a whole community changing that. So things like water quality, or in education, we might talk about readiness for school. A population-level outcome that no one organization on its own can affect all by itself, but we can all contribute to that. And then the next line you see that it's to improve the performance of programs, which is where the district comes in, agencies and service systems. So related to water quality, you might say, well, what's a program in that? Well, the city offers rain garden grants. That's a program. So you would look for performance of that program contributing up to the population result. Same thing with readiness for K, we're talking about high-quality pre-K programs being a contributing factor. But as we know, there's a lot of other contributing factors to readiness for school. So we alone can't do it, but we can do it with our partners. So the concept of RBA from a graphical standpoint talks about a curve, or another word you could put in there is trend. So this graphic is intended to say, okay, we've been trending in this direction. So imagine we're talking about vaping. You know, that's a current issue. So the trend is increasing on the number of students that are vaping. If we do nothing different, we'll probably be in one of those dotted lines. We'll probably be close to our trend up to this point. And we have to ask ourselves, is that okay for us to land in that area? And if we say no, hopefully we say no, that that's not okay for us to land there, then the question is, how do we turn the curve? So how do we bend that trend? Ooh, I could market that. How do we turn that curve so that we change the momentum from the direction it's going into the direction we want it to go in? So if you think about vaping, how do we decrease? How do we turn it so the trend does not continuous increase? Now, if you go back there, Mike, just one sec. Think about that, those arrows could go completely opposite that, right? We could have a trend that is decreasing. So for example, we know from our students, from listening to them, that mental health concerns. They feel like they're sinking a little bit, right? That student wellness is maybe decreasing right now and maybe the reason to connect in with some of the SEL. So in that way, we want to turn the curve upward. So just want you to think, you're not always going up and turning down, you could be going down and want to turn it up. Makes sense? Thank you. So when we talk about doing a turn the curve exercise, which you heard Julie Brock tell you is going on within the collaborative action networks of Cradle to Career, the exercise involves these five questions. So how are we doing? So that would be where you describe the trend. We have an increase in vaping or we have a decrease in mental wellness. What's the story behind the current trend? So that's, part of this process is the value is in the process of getting everybody together and talking about why are we in this state right now? Well, with vaping, we could talk about there's a new technology out, there's marketing toward youth, it's easier to hide than cigarettes. You know, there might be a number of factors on why that's increasing. So we talk about that. We might talk about the story behind the curve is also what's the impact of the trend that we're seeing. So it's dangerous for kids. They may be using the device to use a controlled substance. Again, a danger to them. So it's not just why are we going in that direction, but what's wrong with continuing to go in that direction? So then we say, okay, who are the partners that can help us turn this curve? So we've already had partnerships with Olmsted County Public Health and Rochester Police Department in working on this. You've been to, some of you were at the parent sessions that we did about this. But there's a lot of people working on this issue from a number of angles. So there's where we can get at one of those population results, right? The school district alone probably can't solve this problem, but we can contribute in a positive way to turning that curve. And that's when we say, okay, what does the research say about this? What works to turn this curve? So we say to our public health experts, is there research out there that says this is what has worked in other communities? Or this is what has worked with a previous similar kind of challenge? Since vaping is so new, there might not be research on that yet, but there might be research on something similar. And then have we done any pilots? Do we know what's worked locally? So what works to turn the curve? And then finally, we're ready for our action planning. So that's a lot of work that goes into it before we ever get to the action plan. But again, the process is key. So then the accountability part of RBA, the A in RBA, again, we go back to two different types. The population level, which we've already talked about, where a group of partners takes collective responsibility for changing that curve, turning that curve, or the performance accountability. So I'm looking at my own sphere of influence in my program or my agency and how are we doing internally? So the approach revolves around three questions. How much did we do? How well did we do it? And then the next slide we'll talk about, is anyone better off or who is better off? So how much did we do? You can see some examples there. That's about the quantity of effort. So we want to describe, how many people did we engage in our efforts on vaping? How many sessions did we deliver? Those kind of things. There's value to that data, but not all by itself. Then we say, how well did we do that? Were we timely in our efforts or did we miss a window? Are people satisfied with our efforts? Did we do it efficiently, cost-wise, or with fidelity connected to the standards? And then finally, is anyone better off? So this is where we get into where we like to live in terms of outcome data. Typically, it's the students, but we know there's a lot of other things. Denise talked about the staff wellness as well. So it could be behavior change, could be an attitude shift, a perception, a mindset shift, could be circumstance change. So if a student has been below grade level in something and we bring them up to grade level, that would be an example of a circumstance change. Could be a knowledge increase. A lot of times our testing gets at that, or performances that show that a child has gained the knowledge. And then do the skills improve? And that's where our Panorama data can come in for SEL. Our, in pre-K, we use TS Gold, which is a whole child assessment to see where their skills are. So we want to use the appropriate measure of who's better off for whatever we're attempting to turn the curve on. Does that make sense? So just enough to whet your appetite.
Director Marvin.
I know that the evaluation approach comes up later in the strategic plan as well. And under the part, how much did we do, on the second bullet under activities, number of activities. I'm assuming that part of the action plan would be specific activities, not just we're going to do a bunch of stuff, but these are the things. And then would each activity be evaluated separately? So the idea is kids, we want kids to quit vaping. There'd be a marketing plan and there'd be counseling and there'd be support groups. Do you evaluate each one separately?
I think you would, you would do some quality checks of your own work, but in terms of turning the curve, you're looking for that trend to change. So that's your macro accountability measure. You might have micro measures that are within those activities.
Director Workman.
So back on the, okay, I just wrote this down, if we do nothing different slide, are we simply talking about things that need to get better? So if, if we are doing okay on something, it's, it's something good that's happening, do we ever talk about, well, do we just continue doing this or can we aim even higher? Can we turn the curve for things that are already pretty high that we would want to push?
Sure, to go from good to great, so to speak, to steal an idea? Yes. I think you could use it in any situation. You could actually be flat and not really have a curve, so to speak, and want to move it, you know, too.
I mean, I know there are always things that drive our, draw our attention immediate that we have, really need to fix. But I mean, sometimes, you know, you may have a student who, or a bunch of students who are, who could really be pushed more academically, but because they're not exhibiting any problems or issues, they don't cause trouble, they kind of get shut in a corner. I'm not saying this is happening, I'm just using this as a scenario. You know, so in this case, we would also have to pay attention to all the good stuff that we're doing and how can we make that good stuff even better rather than just kind of stay flat?
I think the key is the question, is it okay to continue in the direction we've been going?
Okay.
That's the key. Because if it's not okay, if we're not okay that those kids aren't pushing themselves hard enough or we aren't pushing them hard enough, then the answer is no, and we need to turn the curve.
Other questions? Thanks Superintendent. All right. Now we'll have Julie talk about community partnerships.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Julie Rusick. I'm the coordinator of family and community engagement, formally. Informally, Jack of all trades. And this afternoon, I presented right after lunch to our new teachers, and now I'm fourth in line. So I'm going to do my best to get through my material and keep you alert and awake and excited about community partnerships since I've had practice this afternoon. I'm going to talk to you about our community partnerships as they relate to our strategic plan. And of course, our goal is that we will have a formal process district-wide for all community partnerships. Are we there in 2019? No. But I will talk to you about where we are right now and where we hope to be in the future. Director Seelinger made a really good point earlier in talking about relationships and working together. While we can create a beautiful partnership process, documentation, infographics that look really nice on paper, the fact of the matter is that we're asking people, adults especially, to sit down together and to communicate and work together for the success of our students. So that's a difficult process and it sometimes takes time. And I think that's one of the biggest lessons we've learned through our community schools work, that maybe some targets we set originally have taken a little bit longer because we're working with people and we're establishing trust and relationships between them. So I wanted to make sure that I prefaced my presentation that, yep, tonight I will share with you a process, but within that is a significant amount of, of relationship. with you a process, but within that is a significant amount of, of relationship and trust that exists both at the site level and then at the district level as well. So that said, our goal is to have a formal community partnership process district-wide. But tonight, I'm going to focus specifically on our four, and I said that correctly, four community school sites. And they are, as listed on the slide, Gage Elementary, Riverside Central Elementary School, the Rochester Alternative Learning Center, and then most recently, John Marshall High School has come on board with our team. So I wanted to take this opportunity to kind of shine a light on both the work of John Marshall, that has already happened and that is yet to come, and not only the support of the cabinet, the superintendent, the school board, the site, but also the support of our backbone partner, The United Way, in agreeing to bring on another school to support as we move forward in our community schools work. It takes all of us working together to support our kids and we couldn't be happier to be growing our team. So I will talk a little bit about these four sites and the work that we've done in the last few years in terms of partnership, and then we'll talk about questions afterward. Just to go back, the, a definition that we use, it's our elevator speech for community schools, is that community schools is a strategy for aligning school and community resources for student success. And the key word is aligning, also strategy. It's not a program, it's mindset. And so we are working very hard to align our work so that students are successful, successful in all areas, not, not just academics over another thing. But as we look at our graduate profile, we are looking for success in all of those categories. In doing so, we need to look at our partnerships. A, where is the need that our students have? And then what do our partners bring to the table to help us address that need? So before I move on, I also want to give credit to the partnerships that already exist in the district, both at our community school sites and then district-wide. We could not, could not do the work that we do without the support of our partners. We have an amazing community that supports the work that we do. I believe that we are a team. And whenever we ask for partners to come to the table to support our students, we don't just get one. We get numerous partners who are there and ready to support our kids. So that makes me proud to live and work in this community. Moving forward, the National Coalition for Community Schools has identified four key areas for aligning our work. So these are the four pillars of community schools in a really nice and busy infographic. But these pillars really can, you can take the work that we do and categorize it under these four areas. Expanded learning time and opportunities, active family and community engagement, collaborative leadership and practice, and integrated student supports. So our goal this year is to take a look at the partnerships that we have, the work that we're doing, and align it to these four pillars. I'm in a minute going to show you another infographic that we've designed that kind of starts to help us parse out who our partners are and where they're working. This is another way that we can start to align our work to these categories. Also, interestingly enough, aligns very nicely to our graduate profile. So we will be working to put the, these four pillars against our, or I shouldn't say against, with our graduate profile to make sure that we have partnerships and opportunities for students in all areas. So at the local level, we have developed our own infographic that talks about who is at the table and who's working with us so that our students can be successful. And you can see that we spent some time last spring in a retreat, talking a lot about where we've come from and where we are now. And we probably, this infographic we voted needs to change a little bit to more adequately talk about our goals for students. But we put students in the center, not just their academic success, but their success in life. So one of the things we need to change is that center, except for the fact that students are there. They'll never leave that spot. So when we are, when we were designing this infographic and talking about, okay, what are our goals at each building and who's at the table working with us, it was really important that we start in the center with our students and then work out what are their needs, how are we addressing them, and who's addressing them with us? So this is just an example, and you can see that we have used some of the language from RBA, result in the center, indicators, strategies, and practices as we move out in those concentric circles. This is just one example. All of our community school sites have this and continue, this is a living document. So this year, they'll re, they'll edit this again so that it display, accurately portrays the work that's happening at each site. So we knew who was at the table with us. We had a really lovely picture that showed who was at the table with us, but then we needed to get down to the actual work of partnering with our partners. And so to do that, we knew we were going to use the RBA tool to identify our performance measures. We knew that we needed to have some way of collecting the data so that we knew that we were turning the curve. And we just didn't know what that process should look like. So we had, we were very fortunate last fall to work with the Mayo Clinic Management, Engineering, and Internal Consulting Department at Mayo. They donated their time, two days' time, and I believe it was a team of between four and six people who were there, working with us at the United Way Building, to look at our process from start to finish. It was extensive, it was hard, it was sweaty, but it was very successful. So I think it's important to highlight this partnership as a way of saying that we couldn't do this work without the knowledge and expertise of a very local partner that does this on a very broad scale for the Mayo Clinic. So the facilitators worked with us to devise our process and then support us as we started working with it. You'll see on the next slide, this is just a snip, and I put this on here nice and small so that it would feel intimidating to everyone because it did to us.
Thank you.
This is one of, you're welcome. This is one of three pages that all of our work ended up looking like this. So this is the process map of point A to maybe point F. The rest of them, I believe I linked the whole document earlier today when we were working on Director Nathan's questions. So you can access the whole document, but this is just an example to show you, we really worked with the team to identify every single step that needed to be in place so that we could have successful partnerships with our partners. And then we got to the point where, okay, we've identified everything, now let's try it out. So we worked with between four and six partners last year, throughout the year, to really go through this process. And we realized something right, very quickly, right away, that we were trying to go through these steps chronologically. Step one, step two, step three, step four, and then we were getting stuck. And it was a very, it was a great learning experience for the whole team to realize that that's not partnership, that's partnership on a piece of paper, but this is relational. And there are some things that have already happened, maybe step 16, that the, at the site level, the, the partners had already worked through. And so while we need to have a formal partnership process, we need to understand that there is some fluidity and flexibility between the steps that we're working on and the people that are working on them. So that was probably one of our best lessons in working through this process, that no, we're not going to check off one, two, three, four, five. We may do steps six through 10, and then we're stuck on step four, but we'll go back and get that. So we have a very formal process. We now have, have learned that we know that it can work out of order, and that's okay. So we got through this, this process and we got to the point where the partners had identified shared, the partner and the site had identified those shared performance measures, which I think we can go to next. This is just another piece of paper, and, and when we talk in our team meetings, this is just a piece of paper. But really, it should identify the work that the, the team is working on together. So what are those shared performance measures that the partner and the site, or the partner and maybe even a specific teacher in a classroom are working on together? And, and how are we owning those and who owns which piece? And so while we have this formal process and this formal piece of paper that talks about our partnership, really, we were, we wanted to make sure that it was instilled in everyone at the table that this is shared and owned. So the next step was to, okay, we have agreed upon those measures, now we need to start measuring them. We have a partnership specialist that is an employee of The United Way but works 100% of his time in the district. And so he was tasked originally with starting to pull some of this data manually. Director Schluessner, you probably know how that would go. Not very well. And it was taking a long time. And if we want to do some, live action is the only word that comes to my mind, but continuous feedback loops on data, being able to do something manually just wasn't helpful to the partnership. So from there, we started exploring a data management system and landed on, a few of them actually, but we landed on, together with United Way, CitySpan software. And the CitySpan data management system is this key component of our, of our partnership process, where partners will be inputting some of their data as they work with our students, and then we will be inputting some data. The platform does, Skyward doesn't daily or nightly dump of information into the CitySpan software so that both partner and staff member can access data that is up to date. And so this is something that we've been working on all summer to figure out how we're going to roll this out at the four community school sites, but it will allow us to work with our partners and prove that we are turning the curve on those performance measures that Amy talked about, that process earlier, but the ones that we've identified with our partners on a very continuous and up-to-date manner. So next steps would then be to continue to onboard our partners at the community school sites with an end goal of all partners being formally onboarded. So that's something that we'll continue to work on this year. To begin using CitySpan at all of our community school sites during the 2019-2020 school year, and there's a plan for that already in place. At the end of the year, to evaluate success of this partnership process and amend where necessary. And then the final step being a plan for rolling out this process district-wide. And then my final slide is just to share, there had been a question about community partners. And so we pulled together quickly a list of, of partners, current partners at our community school sites. This is not all of our partners. Some partners or programs may not be listed here, but just to give you a taste of who we are currently working with and have, have some semi-formal or formal relationships with, the list is extensive. And as I mentioned before, we could not do our work without the, the partnership and support of our community partners.
Julie, I just had a question regarding the CSDMS system, CitySpan Data Management Is it limited in its use to community schools? It seems like it can do a number of great things. I guess I'm thinking and or wondering, could it be potentially a tool that we as a district use beyond just community schools?
That's a great question. I think our goal is to prove effectiveness with our community school sites, and then that would be a potential software that we could use district-wide.
Thank you. I hadn't anticipated Director Schluessner asking that question, but...
I already pulled up the website, so I have the answer. Chicago, Boston, LA, they all use CitySpan. It's big.
So, so not just district-wide, but perhaps citywide?
Absolutely. Fair to say.
Superintendent Munoz.
All right. I get the pleasure of talking a bit about the, the plan. And this year, we decided to really use a theory of action processes, which the same process that we have our sites do when they have their data retrieved and look at their data and determine their site plans. So first one is what does success look like? You should recognize those. Those are the three goals that the board approved quite some time ago, was for the strategic plan goals. So part of the theory of action process is if we do this, then this is what we expect to see. So the areas that we believe if we do these, empower engaged students, rigorous and relevant learning in a safe and supportive environment, that talks about the work we're doing in rigor and relevance framework, and also a lot of the SEL work that we'll be doing this year. Invest in developing the capacity of teachers, leaders, and school staff to foster academic and social-emotional learning. The individuals kind of spoke, the training that we'll be doing in those areas. And then using equity lens for all of our decision-making. And then the fourth one is to engage families, community and staff to establish and maintain effective partnerships. And that's kind of the area that Julie just finished talking about, and having a, a consistent process that we use to onboard partners. I remember back in the day when I started education and, you know, somebody jumped up and says, hey, I have a grant, will you partner with it? They go, money? Yeah, we'll take it. It never took the time to see, does it fit the work that we're doing? We just saw dollars signed and said, yeah, we'll partner. But I think, I am happy that we have a process and making sure that it's, it aligns with the strategic plan and things that we're trying to do as a system. And then the fifth one is to align school board policies, practices, district practices, and resources to implement strategies throughout organizations. So we believe if we do those things, then all students who attend Rochester Public Schools will discover their individual passions along with their strong sense of self and purpose, and will graduate with the graduate profile. So just kind of summarize it, this is our theory of action. We believe that these are the greatest levers to ensure that we achieve our mission statement that's back on the wall behind us. So that's that. And then this is kind of, this is going to be a new thing, not only for all of us in this room, but I think for all of our staff and even for our community. This is not the type of reporting out that they're used to. But I think you heard tonight, the Cradle to Career is used in this, we're using it in community schools. I, I think it's, it's the new way, I think, that not only districts, but other organizations are going to use to measure our success. So if you notice there on the left-hand column, those are the, the areas that I just talked about. And then there are the three areas, how much did we do, how well did we do it, and is anyone better off? We did mention there, there'll be two reporting cycles. We do have an idea on some of the data that we'll look at to determine, is anybody better off? For example, we're doing the Panorama survey two times a year. We can compare how students did from the fall to the spring. But we also realize that we have to organize a group to even have more examples of how we're going to measure turning that curve and what are we going to use to, to do that. So that's work that we'll continue to, to work on moving forward. So what are we going to do year one? Year one, in the area of rigorous and relevant learning and safe and supportive environment, this is where we're talking about the social-emotional work we're doing, the second step curriculum, the Panorama survey, which we're going to give two times a year. And then I call it the universal screener that, that Denise shared with you. Rigorous and relevant framework, Brenda shared with you, that this year is really focusing on our leadership and instructional coaches, very similar to the process we use with the work with Dr. Holly. We trained leadership first, and then the next step was working with the teachers. Grading for learning, we've been working with administration and teachers on that area. We'll continue our work with Dr. Holly on the CLRT work. And then something new that we started last year is a demonstration classroom, and with that, and it's at John Marshall. Why did we choose John Marshall? Well, the principal there is the part of our group that's been working with Dr. Daggett, and he, as we talked about, this may be a way to spread rigorous and relevant Quad D learning. Eric said, we'll do it in our school. And he reached out and had two teachers who stepped up and said that they would be a demonstration classroom. And what that is, is they're going to be, I would say, our, our experts in Quad D And what that is, is they're going to be, I would say, our, our experts in Quad D instruction. And teachers, we started out the first semester last year, teachers within John Marshall could sign up for, I think it was a three-hour block where they come in and they, with instructional coaches, they have a pre-meeting. This is what we're going to look for going in. So, the teacher goes in with instructional coach, observes one of these demonstration teachers, and then they process what they saw. And then, they also have an opportunity, that teacher, to interact with that demonstration teacher to talk about what they saw and maybe how they could use that in their classroom. So, first semester last year, it was just opened up to John Marshall teachers. Second semester last year, we opened it up to other teachers across the district. So, we did have some teachers from other schools come in for three hours and be part of this process. We'll continue that work at John Marshall. As you look into year two and three, we hope to have demonstration classrooms in other buildings across the district. Building capacity, professional development. Brenda shared with you, under rigorous and relevant framework, those are the two courses that our leadership and instructional coaches will be going through. Those are two full-day training sessions. Along with, as Brenda mentioned, we encourage you to come to Dr. Daggett's keynote on Wednesday. He's, it's kind of a, setting the stage for the work on rigorous and relevant framework and also talks a lot about SEL in his presentation. So, it's kind of setting the stage for all the staff in, in our system, but really, right now, the leadership and instructional coaches will be going through the actual training. Not only are they getting the two full-days training, as was mentioned, they have eight half-day sessions where they have in-person coaching, very similar to the work we did with Dr. Holly. And then, they have four online coaching sessions as well. We'll continue, we'll continue to work with Dr. Holly in the same ways, coaching, observing classrooms and giving teachers feedback. And then, as mentioned, we are training the counselors and social workers and coaches in SEL. And then, Denise kind of touched a little bit on staff wellness and that's something that we felt that was important. A couple of years ago, we partnered with the Dan Abraham Healthy Living Center to do staff wellness training for all of our leadership. And the feedback we got from our leadership was that that was good, good training. I, to be honest with you, I saw a lot of value in and a lot of the strategies that they taught us, I use on a very regular basis. A good way to help you fall asleep is one of them that works for me very well. But we thought that we need to maybe give teachers an opportunity to partake in that. So, this first year, we're going to work with the DOCK and provide these trainings after school. And it'll be optional for those who want to attend and be part of that and, and work with CNI to give them some credit for that as well. And then, also looking at doing a book study. So, really, just trying to pilot this work and it seems, if it seems to be effective, then as we look at year two, three, four and five, how can we implement that across the district for all staff? In the area of equity and access, this is something that we'll continue as a district and ask our buildings to review their practices and procedures and are there things that we're doing at the district or site level that may be creating barriers for certain groups of students either in their buildings or at the district level? And then, also listed there is that we want to do the IDI assessment, which is a cross-cultural assessment of intercultural competency. Year one, we want to have all of our leadership take that survey. And then, year two, we would have all of our staff do the same thing as well. And then, the ECAP, that is something that Afalavi did with some of the sites last year, but we wanted to implement this across the district. And this is really a process to use to determine, there's seven different indicators as far as equity work and to assess how a site is doing in those seven areas. And the first one is climate. And under a climate, that's looking at relationships and inclusion and behavior expectations. The second area is environment and resources. So, they're looking at the learning environment, students and families, participation in a learning environment. The third section is leadership. This is efforts to include and center voice and perspectives from all members of the learning committee. And I'll talk a little more about how we're going to do that. And then, under leadership is leadership practices that result in development of policies and practices and procedures that promote educational equity. The fourth one is continuous improvement. And this is to determine who's not benefiting from current policies and practice instructors. And then, or five is instruction and assessment. This is looking at instructional practices. Are they relevant and do they represent the students' lives, experiences? And then, curricular materials foster and understanding and appreciation of students' own culture and history. The sixth indicator is student engagement. And that's looking at participates in the higher-level courses. I think Director Barlow was kind of referencing that in his question, but looking at, that could be looking at how many of our, for example, our students of color are in AP courses, honor courses. And then, also looking at members of historically marginalized groups, meaningful participation in decision-making processes at the building level and district level, and then family and community partnerships. So, really, it's a, it's a, an assessment tool that they go in and assess, how are we doing in those seven areas for the ECAP? So, then, they will use, we see this happening in the future, that that's another piece of data that they would use when they look at their, during their data retreats to create their site improvement plans. All right. And then, in the area of family, community, staff partnerships, what we want to do in year one is develop pathways, provide feedback at the site and district level. And then, also two-way communication at the site and district level. So, year one, we want to focus internally. How can we at the buildings do a better job of communicating with the staff within that building? How can we as a district do a better job of communicating to all of our employees? Second part of that is how can we provide better opportunities for staff in buildings to provide input on decision-making and how can we at the district level do the same? So, year one, we're focusing just internally on communication and feedback or input. We took the liberty to suggest strongly to the board, this is an area where you can have that connection to the strategic plan and policy and governance and encourage you to create an equity policy. That's not something that we have. Maybe, I think that's something that maybe the equity or the policy committee could work on and draft. We could use our student school board to give us some feedback on that draft and then bring it to the board for formal approval. And then, we encourage the policy review through an equity lens. We're, have a partnership with the Midwest and Plains Equity Center. They have a tool that you can use to help you do that work. So, we'll partner with them and, and use that tool as we look, you know, we renew policies, but now this is adding another piece at this policy, let's look at it through an equity lens. And then, we, the third suggestion we have for the board is to, for the community engagement committee to really create a plan on how you can engage underrepresented families and community members. And I do know this past year, that group did have a couple of meetings with Somali population, I think it was, to get some input from them. But encourage the board to, at least that committee, to create a plan on how they can better reach out to those different groups. So, that's kind of a quick summary of what we want to do in year one. Year two, you're going to see the same categories. We'll continue to work in the rigorous and relevance framework, universal screener and social-emotional learning. We hope, we're doing four schools this year. The hope is that if it goes well, we can either go district-wide or expand more schools using that tool. And then, also expand the use of, of data and interventions in tier one and tier three. And then, as Denise mentioned, right now, we know we need something for the high school in year two, but we don't know what that is. We want to spend this year working on that and finding what's the best way to, to do that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, year two, we want to expand our demonstration classroom to additional schools across the district. As far as building capacity, I mentioned previously, this first year, two classes for the leadership and instructional coaches. In year two, they'll get a third class, which is leveraging system-wide data to support decision-making. And then, we have three sessions for teachers, creating a rigorous and relevant learning experience, applying rigorous and relevant instructional strategies and building positive relationships. So, they will have, those are the three sessions that they'll have. And then, we have district, we have set the 2020-21 school year as the full implementation of grading for learning. We'll continue the coaching on culturally responsive instruction. And another area that we want to explore and, and provide training in year two is restorative practices. And we do have some sites and individuals using that at the site level, but we feel that we need to provide, provide training in year two so it can be implemented district-wide. In the area of equity and access, we'll, you know, you're not going to be able to review policies and practices all in one year. We'll continue doing that in year two. And as I mentioned earlier, all of the sites will have completed their ECAP process or their audit, I call it. And then, they will use that data as they create their site plan during the data retreat. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we will have that IDI inventory given, teachers take that inventory. In the area of family, community, staff partnerships, now we're going to take the same communication and input out externally. And how can, at the buildings, how can they do a better job of getting parents having input and feedback on things that are going on at the site? And we at the district level, how can we have our stakeholders have more opportunities to provide feedback and input? And then, in the area of communication, both at the site and district level, how can we improve the way we communicate out and receive communication in externally? So, that's what we're doing in family, community partnership. Policy governments, we just have a couple of things, continue the, you know, it takes a long time to review all the policies we have, but we'll continue doing that through an equity lens and then continue to engage traditionally represented the families and community members. And we left it at that. We, we felt maybe the board during a study session can, can, and you have a conversation, what else could the board do in this area for year two? So, that's all we have for the first two years. I would anticipate when we come back and give you an update on year two, it may look a little bit different based on how year go, year one goes. We may have to tweak year two a little bit. And then, as year two goes, we'll work on years three, four and five.
Director Admanson, then Workman.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Great presentation. I love hearing all the great things that we're doing in our district. We all know that great things happen because, you know, we, we see that 87% of students or whatever that was who are excited to have their teacher again the next year, but, I mean, if, if they were to have. But a question about the PowerPoint we just saw. Is that itself a strategic plan document? Do we have a more formal, laid-out, something that we could show to somebody other than pointing them to a PowerPoint in a board doc? Or is this something that's still in process? I'm just really unclear what we're seeing.
Yeah, we have a draft that we'll put out on the website that won't be just these slides. It'll be, it won't be a 40-pager like the sample that you sent me, but it, it will be more than what has been approved by the board so far, as far as the goals and the core beliefs and the mission statement. But we will have a little more detail and, and more of a narrative form versus a PowerPoint slide.
Because this, this is a great description of what we'll be doing and the initiative portion of it. The, the, these are really awesome things and, and this is how we, we implement them and the kinds of things that support them. But, but I crave more structure in terms of being able to say, here's what we're about, here's how we're tracking it, here's, you know, just something a little more concrete. So, is that going to come to us again or what's the plan?
There's a planning on it.
Okay.
It'll be on the website. This pretty much summarizes that document that we would put on there, just making it look more of a narrative form versus a PowerPoint presentation, so.
Now, as you know, I'm a, a new school board member and I've completed all of the phases of training that MSBA provides. And one of the things that we were given that talks about standards for school board leadership, and we've talked about them in study sessions, it does say that the school board with community input develops the strategic plan. And so, it seems to me that having some participation in a formalized document and the evaluation plan and revisiting it, rather than just getting reports, but being able to discuss it and give some input would be appropriate in terms of what's the school board's job.
Yeah, I would, I would say we've done that already. We did two thought exchanges to create the graduate profile. So, I think we had 2,300 people participate in that exchange and then we put it out there again. Then, if you remember in the study session, we worked with the board to actually create the profile, put it out there. Again, did we get it right to get feedback? So, we had two opportunities there. And then, the actual strategic plan that the board approved with the mission statement and the goals and accordingly, that is the strategic plan. And, and if you recall, during the study session, one, the representative from the School Board Association, she specifically said more than once that the board's role is to create, to approve the plan. What we just presented to you is how management is going to make the goals happen. That's the role of management. The role of the board is the actual strategic plan, which you formally approved, it's been out there, it's on the website. Tonight was just on how we are, the work that we're going to do to try to accomplish those three goals that, that is, is the strategic plan, so.
So, can I just ask you a question about what's out there and already approved? We have a document and it says universal goals and it has three statements of, I have it here somewhere, but I don't think I'm going to dig for it right now. But they're, they're fairly vague statements, right? They're, they're visionary, they're philosophical types of statements. Is that what we're considering, our goals and they're ongoing and they're indefinite for the next foreseeable future? One of the, the links that I, I sent you so we could have a common framework for my questions, had something like, here's a strategic plan and we're in year four of five and here's what we're focusing on year four, similar to your slides, which are great. But, but it said, you know, at the end of this, you know, it's, it's the end of this and we revisit it and create a new document. So, is that what we're looking at? Is this a three-year plan that you're presenting us?
This is actually a five-year plan that we're looking at.
A five-year plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, but is this year one of a five-year plan?
This is year one.
And so, how long ago was it? Forgive me because I wasn't on the board and I don't remember the dates and I don't have them in my notes. How long ago was it that that board said, yes, we approve this and we think it's great and this is where we're going?
I don't have the exact date on that.
Was it last year?
So, are you, are you suggesting that we put the strategic plan out again and get approval on the plan?
Well, at this point, I'm not making a suggestion. I'm trying to understand. Once I understand, maybe I might make a suggestion.
Well, the board, without the two new ones, approved the plan.
Yeah.
And then, we also asked the board for permission to give us a year because of the work we're doing with Dr. Daggett, to come up with the action steps and the work that we're going to do to accomplish the three goals that the board. You weren't on the board at the time, so if the board decides they want to revisit the strategic plan because we have two new members, then we can do that, but...
But otherwise, it's indefinite until somebody speaks up and says, let's revisit it?
Well, if I may. Superintendent Munoz is absolutely correct in terms of the actions of the past board. And yet, as he has also indicated, that if it is the desire of you or other board members to revisit the plan, I think an appropriate recommendation could probably be developed and implemented. But I, I think at this point, you're simply offering your take, your view.
I'm just trying to understand and, and if there's a calendar, if there's a schedule, if it's considered indefinite, you know, could it go five years, 25 years until somebody? I'm, I'm unclear because I know there was a really excellent process that was put in place, was it 2000 and... Was it 2000 and, I don't know, early?
2012.
That you, you really gained a lot of community input at that point and there was an intensive exploration and some, you know, really good statements and really good thoughts came out of that. But, but what I didn't see happen, I saw some philosophical statements and a general direction, which is indeed what, what a strategic plan is and what the school board is in charge of. But what I never really saw is a list of goals and measurements and reports on those goals and then a revisiting of that on a yearly basis connected to that original document. And so it's just a void in my head. I'm not saying those documents out there aren't out there, I just haven't seen them. So I don't understand the process, I don't understand the calendar, I don't understand the expectations.
Then perhaps what Director Admanson and I would propose, this seems like this would be a great study session, discussion, or re-actually, you know, spend a bit more time. I'm not trying to rush the process. I think it's appropriate for you or any other board member to take as much time.
Well, unless my questions can be answered today, then it's not necessary to spend our time on that.
Well, if it would be helpful, we can put 2019 to five years out on, on that one cheater that's out there. It's, I don't remember the exact wording, but the previous goals of the strategic plan that you mentioned in 2012 were very general, very similar to these. And then you were right, we did at that time have some subgroups that helped us establish the action steps that we would do to reach those three goals. And then we switched to, the board went through some training with, oh, what am I drawing? Dennis Teasborough. And then we switched to the vision cards. Now, the vision cards that were done by the management on the actions and the work that we're going to do to accomplish those same three general goals. So that was done, I don't remember the exact year that we did that. And then we come every so often during the school year, we presented a vision card on each of those. I think we called them strategic strategies to accomplish the three goals that were really general, just like these as well. But at that time, we did not engage multiple people to help us come up with action steps. We, as a, very similar to this work, we had cabinet and other individuals part of this create the action steps for these three goals. So I will say, if, if you are going to change the strategic plan, we would suggest you do that sooner than later because we're moving forward. And if you're going to make changes to those three goals, then the sooner we know, we can make our adjustments on that.
Director Workman, then Marvin.
I'm good.
Okay, Marvin.
The background that you provided, I think, is really important. And I think you absolutely nailed where we are, where we've come from, where we're going. And Director Admanson, I understand your concern. The three goals that we agreed on and voted on, access and equity, student achievement, and accountability. We, I think we had a great discussion. I think those really encompass what all of this is about. From my perspective, just in terms of communicating this to the staff, to the public, I wish there were some way that we could have each of these areas under one of those three goals. Rigorous and relevant learning, safe and supportive environment, for instance. You know, I think that's under student achievement, for instance, if we could do that. And then, you know, as I'm looking through these, I know what you're talking about, I know what we're talking about. But I'm wondering if it's going to be confusing to others. Because, for instance, it looks like under year one, rigorous and relevant learning, safe and supportive environment, and the next one, building capacity. There are a number of bullet points under each of those that are staff development. It's just topics. And I'm wondering if these were more like action statements, you know, if they started with a verb. This is what we're going to do because of this, you know, it's, and short, but just educate all staff in whatever, in order to whatever. And I get it, it's more work and I may be alone in this. But I'm thinking if these were actions rather than topics and actions with a brief explanation about why, if that might be easier for everybody to understand.
Director Nathan.
So thinking back to the 2013 strategic plan, which I was part of the action teams, the feedback over the years that I've gotten about the previous strategic plan is that people lost track of, of tracking the implementation and tracking our, frankly, tracking our success. So I share Director Admanson's, I guess, need for structure to know more frequently how, not just what the outcomes are, but what our progress is on implementation. If we, if we did speak of them in terms of action steps. I mean, I remember far in the past, the school board agenda was arranged around a structure. And we had talked about some models where the school board agenda was arranged around the structure of the strategic plan so that every topic we talked about, we could somehow connect to what the vision was of the plan. So I share that, that, that need for a little bit more looking over the next two years, not five years, because anything can happen in five years, for the next two years, to really talk about when our, when we, when our community can expect to hear more of the story. Because it is hard to lose track of it when you're either part of it or when you're not really paying attention. And the more that we're asking our community to come and support us financially, in partnerships, in involvement in the school, I think the more we have to, we have to share our stories. Because I want us to do every single thing that is in the strategic plan. I, I, I know, I know you, I know your, your commitment to our students. You would not have suggested it if you didn't think it was a good idea. So I want us to be successful, but I want other people to know what we're doing and how successful we're being.
So that I might know, are there any board members that are opposed to the contents of the strategic plan that was presented? Are we stating opposition to something we have heard or read, or is it something else?
You mean the actions within what they just talked about?
Sure.
Thumbs up for me.
So I guess I'm just trying, so what are we talking about?
I think we're talking about clearly communicating what it is and why we're doing it to our entire community and establishing a framework in which we can track results and provide accountability to our community. And, and an easier way to communicate that we're all doing our jobs, school board and district alike.
And I'm not sure it's fair to expect that that will come out in one package. I mean, I think, Mike, you already said with some of those strategic plan reporting boxes, you still had to get people together to figure out what the right indicators were for each thing. So, you know, I'm not envisioning it all wrapped up in a bow and then delivered on a, on a desk. But, but, you know, the only two periods of reporting I saw in the plan was at the end of the first semester and the end of the second semester. I'd love to see a more frequent process where we, where we touch base on, we have a plan for the year of how we're going to touch base on everything on the plan. That's just one notion.
Okay, so part of my responsibility or perceived responsibility as chair is to find out where there is agreement on the part of the board as a whole, you know, versus individual preferences. So we've had opportunity to hear primarily from Director Admanson and Nathan. Is, are their views, the shared views of the, the board in terms of, and I don't want to repeat what Director Admanson or Nathan, but are they shared desired views? Director Nathan pretty much alluded to a more frequent reporting out. Was, is that true or is that capturing your concern? And then yours was, if I'm correct, more of a formal presentation or?
Or at least a formal document and some better descriptions of, of how we know if we're successful or not. Is it, is it, do we have a goal of 90% of this? Or do we want to see an increase by at least 2% of this or something measurable?
I think the RPA process is when you turning the curve, when you're starting to turn the curve, you're, you're showing growth in that area. This, that process is not what we expect to have 82% of this. I mean, it's a whole different way of thinking.
Right. But even saying improvement, a change in percentage rather than a goal. But, but numbers measurable?
Some will be.
Smart goals, whatever.
I think some of it will be. We can share, for example, I think one of the examples, that 500 and some kids said they didn't feel connected. Let's say that's, we found that in fall. Well, in the spring, the same assessment. Now it's 250. That's turning the curve, that's showing growth in the right direction.
But we would pick those measurements ahead of time.
Some we have in minority and some we need to get a group of others because we have some good ideas, but we want others to provide some input to make sure we're using the right things. As I mentioned earlier, it's, it's a different way of thinking. And maybe if the board went through that training, that may help you, even though Amy did a wonderful job of explaining it tonight. But I think if you actually went through that training, that might be helpful for you to get a, a better understanding of, it's a different, a different mindset of how you look at things and, and monitor and report out. And, and I'm, I'm just going to say it, some of it is, and we've talked about this a couple of other times, it's really about trusting your people that they're going to do the work. And the fact that we have to report and, and more regularly, I guess I don't understand the rationale for that unless you don't feel work capable of doing the work and you have to monitor it more frequently. I guess I don't understand that part of it. But, and it is going to be different because of the way we'll be reporting information. And it's not too different. It's more of the growth model versus here's the bar and everybody's got to get there at the same time. And, and as I mentioned, we don't have all of the, those pieces put together. We have some really good ideas, but we want to involve more people than the 27 that have been working on this so far to really hone in all of those. And what we used in year one, we may have to tweak it for year two based on, on the feedback that we get from, from the board.
Okay, and board, let's keep in mind this is an informational item. We're not actually being asked to take action upon this. Before I allow Director Workman to comment, I haven't heard yet from either Director Seelinger or Schlussner. Do either of you care to comment?
I very much believe in everything that's been said and actually everybody who's presented. And listen to you, Mike, what you're seeing is personally how I try to lead my team at work as well. Sometimes you just have to trust in the people to do what's right. You can't always have, even in my world, discrete, concrete goals just today at work. We have lessons learned, we just had a software release. There are things we could do better, there are things we did really well. And as I always say to them, as long as we're moving in the right direction, it is all good. So I don't have much to say because I've agreed with everything that you've been saying. And I think it's going in a good direction.
Okay, Director Seelinger.
Yes, thanks for all the presenters and information. Excuse me, I'm flipping back and forth, the team screens. I guess my, my comment is I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding what is, what Director Admanson, Director Nathan are looking for. And so I, I don't know that I can really comment on that specifically. I don't have issue with either what was presented or the plan going forward. But I'm just not, I'm not understanding the context of what's being asked for.
Okay.
Can I clarify? I mean, just to, I don't, I want to leave the table without being clarified. I'm, I am not looking for irregular monitoring in a punitive way. I am looking for a regular schedule of sharing good news, sharing progress. And I think having come from the community side, not sitting at this board, not being privy to the information, not being on committees, I know how hard it is for our community to be connected to our successes. And as we keep going back to the community and asking them for more support because we say we can't do it alone, we have to be committed to giving them the information they need to join us in the partnership. So if we set out a schedule for school board meetings for the year and we knew every month what our topics were going to be that were related to the strategic plan, I'd be happy, I'd be happy with that because that would be the opportunity for us to share what we're doing well.
So, so what I hear you saying now is when we, when we look at the slide, that's a strategic plan reporting and it's got the, the little grid and on there is the reporting dates of semester one and semester two. My first thought was that you were, were saying that that information was not coming often enough. But now I feel what you're saying, what I hear you saying is you are looking for something more like perhaps superintendent's equity update, that's a more anecdotal piece of information. You aren't looking for a grid of strategic plan reporting that has the.
Right, you are correct in interpreting what I said. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Workman. And I'd like to also give Director Admanson, if you so choose, an opportunity to clarify any.
Well, are you still looking for your notes? I, I, I am still trying to figure it out myself because I'm still wrapping my arms around what this presentation was and was intended to be. So I apologize for not having a better answer for you. Oops, sorry. I, I, I see the strategic plan reporting and I'm understanding that means that we would get two regular reports. And I don't have a problem with that supplemented by the other kinds of regular reporting. But I guess what, what I'm, what I'm wondering is how, how will those reports look? I see a grid here and I see just one box, you know, that says, how much did we do under rigorous and relevant learning, safe and supportive environment? But I think the question that, that is poking me is how are we going to measure it? I mean, are you going to talk, I mean, it's that numbers thing again. I'm sorry, I'm kind of talking while I'm thinking and don't really know what I'm saying yet, but.
No, I get what you're saying.
Measurements.
Let me, for example, in the first section here, rigorous and relevant learning, safe and supportive environment. Probably in that first column, how much did we do? We tell, firstly, we'd have to report, well, we had 87 leaders go through the train, I mean, it may be a couple of years out before we could even get to the column where students are better off because of that training that they received. Whereas in some areas, for example, we could say in the, in the fall, we had the 500 kids that felt they weren't connected. Second time in spring when we gave the exact same assessment, we reduced, can I use the word reduce in RPA? Well, we're turning the curve because half of those kids now feel connected. So I think some of it is going to look different. And I know it's just a little column, but that some boxes will look much bigger than others because of the different data points that we have for those. But those will continue to grow, you know. Eventually, we hope, is anybody better off in all of these areas? We can have some kind of report that shows our students are better off because of the work that we're doing in these five areas. And early it may be, we trained X number of people. And then it's very similar to the survey we did last spring with staff in partnership with the former community focus team that I always forget what their, what's the name now. You know, we found out how many staff felt that they understood the training and they're implementing it. I mean, so I think that's the kind of reporting in some areas it can be, which is not normal to, well, 52% of our kids are proficiency in reading. I mean, so it's a little different. In some areas, we may be able to have that percentage number, in some areas, we won't.
I guess it's examples that I'm looking for, examples of what, or maybe a, a report that hasn't been filled in yet. When we come, these are the answers we're going to have, but these are the questions we're asking now. Type of example is what I, what would reassure me, I guess.
Amy, I think, unless the superintendent?
Well, I was just going to add that I think the struggle that you're feeling right now is because we still have turned the, turned the curve work to do on the discrete items that you saw on the list. And so this was just kind of a graphical way to give you an idea that under each of the five areas, we are going to address the turning the curve questions. I don't think the grid was intended to be the report, but it was just to try to give you an idea that we're going to take the five areas and turn the curve on each one. So I think we would be able to give you maybe what you're looking for more completely once that turn the curve work is further aligned, if that makes sense. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
I lost the work. Don't get me wrong. I lost the work.
Well, I mean, you know, fine. You always, as superintendent, you have to have a super elevator speech ready to, you know, you got 30 seconds to talk to somebody and to ask you, why are you doing rigorous and relevant? Well, we believe that if we can get our instruction, not every day all year, but more quad D teaching, our kids are going to get the graduate profile skills that, that our, our community said they need to have. We believe the SEL work, the more we're doing that, our kids are going to feel more safe and supportive. So I think I could show the things that we're doing, how it connects narratively, I can, you know, because if I get asked, I have to be able to boom, 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 here's why we're doing these things. And we, we really had a lot of conversation about how are we going to, how are we going to get to teaching to a point where kids have our collaborators and all of that? We can't do it the traditionally way that we were teaching. And that's what the work, that's why we asked for this year, this last year to work on it because we, in working with Daggett, we knew, ah, this may be our way to get to that type of teaching. And that's why we're going with adopting that framework because we believe if we're doing that type of instruction on a regular basis, kids are going to get those skills that are in the graduate profile. So I know it may not show that way in the actual, what we presented, but that would be my elevator speech if somebody asked me, you know, why are you doing this? Well, this is why we're doing it.
Director?
And maybe we can put that in this narrative that we talked about, an explanation on why we're doing some of the different things we're doing.
So before we circle back around, hopefully new insight will be provided and Director Workman, Director Marvin, and then I think we...
First of all, I think it would be, rather than having continuous conversation, which I really love it, would be, I don't know how other board members might feel about, you know, having some kind of a study session, maybe, maybe not even call it a study session, but just so we get a better idea of, of how this all is working. I mean, the questions that I think have been asked tonight have been really good. But I had two, two questions. One question is for Dr. Marvin. And just think about this for a minute, what the superintendent just said, does that relate at all to what you were saying about having sentences with verbs at the beginning?
This is a trick question.
No, that's what I want you to just think about that. Just to think about that for a minute.
Well, after Director Barlow just said, if you don't have anything new to say, shut up. You said it much nicer than that. And I guess my concern, because I absolutely support this and I absolutely know too what it's like to spend 100 hours creating a document and then have some yahoo show up at the last minute and say, you know what, you should have written it like this instead. That is a suggestion. This is management. We don't do management. But my, my big concern, I think, Mike, is what you said. If, if and when the community sees this, without that kind of narrative at the, at the beginning, when you're talking about quad D, I think that's some sort of vitamin pill. You know, when it says staff wellness under building capacity, does that mean that we're going to provide additional opportunities for staff to become emotionally or physically active? Does it mean we're providing more professional development courses? I just think the clearer we can be to our community, the more trust we're going to build with them. That's my whole thing.
And I believe by the nodding of your head, you've heard us.
Yes.
You could probably, we could probably say more, but you've heard us. And I think Director Workman, she did say she had two questions.
And one was for you. And thank you for saying whatever it was you said. So on, what I'm looking at here is this turn the curve thinking, which I think is really good. And the first one is how are we doing? So in order to know how we're doing, we have to know what we're doing, how it's being done, and how do we know if we're being successful with it? And I think, I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but that's kind of what I hear coming from, from pretty much here. You know, what is the story behind the current trend? You know, like if you're talking about vaping, what's the story? What's happening? You know, the legislature just said you can't buy tobacco products until you're 21. You know, so you pull those kinds of things in. Those are the stories. People relate to stories. I mean, the numbers and all that stuff is important, but I think the stories are really what you establish your relation, how you establish, establish your relationships with the community, with each other. You know, so who are the partners? You know, the, the same kind of thing. And then what works? And what have you tried, maybe that didn't work? And what process did you go through to say, well, what works? Well, we're going to try this or this. Well, why this or, or not that? I mean, I'm not asking for this huge detailed thing, but I think that's kind of where my brain is going. And then finally, okay, we've got all this stuff now, what's the plan? And I don't know how you put that in a little bit more structured format. I think it's, I'm not sure if that's more what, Kathy, what you were, or was it you?
I can't read your mind. Was it me, what?
Well, we're, we're trying to say in terms of what the plan, the plan is to move, to move forward. I mean, I like this turn the curve thinking and I think, you know, if we could get some more training on this RBA stuff, I think that would be really, really helpful. But I would just like to, to echo my fellow board members. I think the work that you're doing is awesome. No quarrel at all with the work, absolutely none. But now it's just the question of, well, how are, how are we communicating this and how are we thinking about this? And, you know, so if we're having this conversation at the, at the board table when we kind of sort of know what's going on, you guys know a lot more than I do, kind of sort of know what's going on. It's, but the community doesn't know anything in terms of that, you know? So how can we put this into not only language that you understand and that we understand, but how can we communicate that to the community in relatively simple terms? And, you know, maybe it is, maybe it is just the storytelling. I don't know, but that's, I would love to have some another discussion on this, not at this time, because I know Chair Barlow is eager to get the agenda rolling.
Well, I think we all are, actually. But Superintendent has indicated he's, he's heard us. He understands really what we're, we're saying. And as Director Schlesner had suggested, trust the process. And, and as Chair, I want to thank the superintendent, staff for the presentation, and we look forward to future reporting out.
Thank you for your input. We'll think seriously about the communication piece of it. I, that's, I hear that. I guess if I misunderstood, there was an issue on the actual work. And I've said many times before, I've never been a school board member. I've been on many other boards and it's, it's, you have to make sure that we stay, one of the boards that I'm on, but I have to constantly remind myself, here's my role as a board member. And maybe I misunderstood that you were getting more into the actual work and needing to approve the how versus the what, which the board creates the what. It's our job to create the how we do that. But if it's really just the communication piece, we can, we can work on that and get a document on the website that makes sense to people and we'll take the feedback that we received tonight on that, on how we can make it more clear for people and have, so they have an understanding of why we're doing some of the different things that are in year one and year two. So we can, we can work on that, that piece. So thank you.
Thank you. Chair, we'll entertain a recess at 7:52, a five-minute recess. Reconvening at eight o'clock. 6.01, approval of you are welcome here resolution. This is a briefing item.
Kathy, Nathan and I worked on a welcome letter from the school board. The superintendent is in the habit of, of sending out welcome letters to the board and, and he has also decided this year that in addition, Kathy, you would do better at this than I would, that besides the board sending out a letter just welcoming our very diverse, very wonderful student population, superintendent has also decided that there would be at every building, a welcome sign. District has one already saying welcome in, was it eight different languages?
Six.
Okay. We just want to make sure that, that our students know that we want them here, that we will do everything we can to provide a safe, happy environment for them to be. So you have, board members, you have a copy of the letter, draft of the letter. Director Nathan, I don't think either one of us have gotten any feedback, so we're expecting no discussion about the content of the letter because you didn't say anything about it before. Just putting that out there.
Shall we read the letter?
Yes.
To all our students, welcome to the 2019-20 school year in Rochester Public Schools. Our school district wants to inspire, challenge, and empower you so you can reach your full potential and achieve your goals. No matter where you were born or what language you speak, we welcome you. No matter your skin color, religion, sexual orientation, gender expression, economic status, age, ethnicity, culture, or ability, we welcome you. We will constantly strive to provide a learning environment where you feel physically and emotionally safe, included, and respected. Our wonderful diversity makes ours a better, stronger school system and community, and we call on everyone in the community to partner with us in supporting you. We're glad you're here. Have a great school year. Awesome.
Second.
Moved in second to discussion.
About moving to action?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 affirms of 2019-2020 you are welcome here letter and directs that the letter be translated into languages commonly used by our students, publicized to the community, and distributed to all school buildings. Directs that the you are welcome here graphic translated into eight languages be publicized to the community and distributed to all school buildings. And three, commits to the development of an equity policy to be included in Rochester Public Schools policies and procedures manual.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
I have...
Superintendent, Director Marvin.
I'm, I'm just wondering if, and I don't think it needs to be amended, but that we would have the names of all school, school board members on the bottom of the letter.
I want that on the...
Director Workman.
My question, another question to Director Marvin, if, I, I didn't understand that we were supposed to give you feedback on this before the meeting tonight, so, but I don't really have any feedback because I think it's a great letter. Thank you for working on it.
Well, it was a, it was a team project.
Superintendent...
Yes, just a couple of questions on, to get a little clarity here. Under one, it says publicized to the community. I guess is that, we, we put the letter on, on the website, does that meet that requirement? And then distributed to all schools, so not for sure what, I mean, we can provide the schools with a copy of it. I don't know the distribution, everybody that works in that building or to the building principal. I mean, just a little on how you'd want to do that. And then the graphic, I'm assuming just use the same one that we've used in the past and, and put, have the schools display them somewhere close to the entry of the school. Okay.
So if I can on that, the question about distributing, I think, Director Marvin, help me with this. The intent was to distribute it to the principal with suggestion for how they distribute it in their building, whether they share it with their teaching staff and then their teaching staff reads it to the children or however, however it works to spread that message in their building.
And then post it on the website.
And then as it relates to publicized to the community...
Website.
Website.
I might suggest instead of just us sending the letter, we can maybe find a way to do that somehow through Sky Alert or Sky Word.
Oh, sure. That'd be great.
Through email.
Electronically is a fine...
This way, instead of just sending one copy to the principals, we'll just send it to every staff member.
That would be great.
Let them know that this was approved by the board.
That would be great. Thank you.
It's a great management decision on how, on what the governance has been.
I was going to say that, you know, we're just saying the what and it's your, your role to figure out how.
But thank you for clarifying.
And then you're asking us for how. So I'm really confused.
Well, that's not always the case.
I'm really confused what direction we're supposed to be going in if we're going. It's great. It's great.
Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.01, approval of a new polling place for the November 5th, 2019 special election briefing item. Mr. Moonos.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this added item.
Good evening, board members, Chair Barlow. I'm not going to slip down and get comfortable because this one's pretty short and sweet. I was last here and told you that we were done lining up polling places for the upcoming election and then we sent that list in after you approved it to Homestead County and they said, oh, by the way, Marion Township decided to change their location for all elections going forward. So we asked our legal counsel, should we have our school board amend the resolution? They said, yes, we think that would be ultra transparent. And so this resolution just says we're moving it from Faith Christian School to Marion Road Christian Church. And that's actually going to be Marion Township location for all elections forward. We just happen to be the first one coming up. So I would ask that you just move that to action and approve it tonight so we can be done with that one.
Move action.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
We move to action.
I have to read the resolution.
I know you guys are talking.
No, we're just amending that.
Yeah, that was just...
Agenda.
Oh, you're right.
We're good.
See?
Lock night.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So amended. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution designating a new polling place, Marion Road Christian Center, for the November 5th, 2019 special election due to the unavailability of the regular polling place, Faith Christian School.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Close session at seven, eight oh nine. Recession at eight oh nine. Close session, we are reconvening at 8:23 PM. 7.02, 7.03, approval of the 2018-2020 Education Minnesota Rochester Paraprofessional Association contract.
Before that, I move to amend the agenda to add the following item, approval of the 2019-2020 Education Minnesota Rochester Paraprofessionals Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
They've just got to read the resolution. I know you guys are talking.
No, we're just amending that.
Yeah, that was just...
Agenda.
Oh, you're right.
We're good.
Yeah.
See? Lock night.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
So amended. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535... Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2018-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Rochester Public Schools and Education Minnesota Rochester Paraprofessionals Association.
Move approval.
Second.
Well, I'd like to offer an appreciation for the time and effort expended on all of the parties involved, and that it's always nice to come to a point of, of agreement, and looking forward to the continuation of this great working relationship. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at 8:25.